I'm here, I can't hear anything. That's better, thank you.
Here. We just call our ears, she'll be back.
Yeah, she's here, she'll be right back.
Right.
Make a motion to excuse the study sessions. Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's right. I was saying, I'll shoot.
I wasn't sure.
All right. Are you ready, Mark, or do you want to? Lindsay.
Let's give it thirty seconds.
All right, C manager, Mark Segler has been pretty surprised about a coresponder program.
Yeah, I want to start off a little bit by going personally to make introductions. Tonight, we have Paul Bachmann, Chief, we've made some regional fire authorities, and emergency protection specialist, Aid Gardner, who is a regional fire authority. The gentleman there, obviously. Navigate a little bit what a mobile health integrated program, mobile integrated health program looks like. They've got some experience of what they're doing for both North Mason and South Mason area. And the reason why they're here tonight is to start talking about some people who are selling in front of the city agency. It's almost too personal. And the need is that those are needing to start to communicate with these things. As I was talking to Chief Snyder, Central Mason, Co-Stad, talked to Abe a little bit about this, and what programs are available that really needs, and the opioid settlement funds. This is an opportunity that I think that makes regional fire authorities do. South Mason, Drac, right there. That's based out of your money. But some of our, some of our agents are, should be the same. So, right now, just about six, seven dollars. Just around a hundred and seven dollars right now. In funds building. Nobody is playing, we talk about maybe some, you know, first time we box them, the first responders, potentially offsetting some of the treatment programs that are in place, like potentially ETS, maybe under, continuing to provide, and these are providing some services. So that's one of the first things, if you look at the One Washington strategies, I didn't bring the topic right, sorry.
Actually, I grabbed my laptop.
I just have a topic, because I didn't want to talk about all fourteen pages of narrow, yeah, kind of one summarize it. But it's treat opioid use disorders are number one, that could be many different, many different avenues. Expand availability for treatment, support for reverse services, medication assisted treatment, substance based treatment. There's education, supporting the people in treatment and recovery, connecting people to the community. What's called connections and care, so it's your help prepared providers for OUD. Under respect, there's supporting screen, creating relationship for all treatment. Adjusting the needs for new justice involved persons, so that may be their justice system already, what kind of treatment. And strategies that can be provided to them. Just in means of regular emergency, one, your families, any base, you know, able absence syndrome. That prescribing, ensure, prescribing, specs of opioids. And that's, that's kind of a stretch, but it's something you shelter, if you will, and there might be avenues through, through Mason Health. Preventing misuse of opioids, so this is corrective advertising, public education, drug take backs, and get those, and get the issues, things like that. And preventing overdose deaths in other areas. Increase in the availability distribution of the oxone. There's a couple of things for free oxone, training, education, part of the fox, so. Smoosh, smooch, that would help address opioid overdose. Overdoses support won't be administered by university treatment. Spread access testing, treatment, professionals, and researchers, which I mean. In that same, leadership, planning, coordination, distraction, training, etc. So, there's, that's kind of the breadth of opportunities within the One Washington agreement. But I think we've got a very viable program here in our midst, you know.
You were saying it was one seventy, it's in the new fund, one seventy?
Yeah, yeah.
What, now the county was collecting these funds first, weren't they?
No, we, we distributed, the county collects this one. So each county, state counties and municipalities collect based on percentage. Twenty twenty-three, we got a agreement with these county street funds. We had some funds, right? Right, I started from the show, Argo Funds, voted Community Lifeline. We, there was some, seven million funds, I received, that was eighteen thousand dollars. As well, as far as I know, that has to be, that is his spend, we haven't talked about. How we spend, where to allocate. That's why, nothing else has been, we said. So I'm going to start by sharing screens, sharing presentation. Reminding to us, Lindsay.
You want to introduce this? Yeah, so mobile integrated health, where does it come? Up north, you know, the fire departments pay a lot of attention for studies, CRT, burning buildings, rescue, and have, that certainly, that's not the majority of what. Majority, the far majority of what we do is, we give certain emergency medical calls, that's the big problem, pushing this in there. And so, we looked at coming out of a pandemic, who was having a follow up, and saw the same thing in all cities, wanted to go through significantly, and just decide thirty percent increase in number of calls during this. And when we did a deeper dive under that, that's, that's a decent amount, we don't have, but when we did a deeper dive, we noticed a lot of calls, we looked at, the number of calls where paramedics needed, there's a life threatening emergency, the fire department was certainly, you know, there's a life threatening situation. That increase was almost two, that's a same over by. So what was driving that thirty percent? What was driving us people to pay for it was, I need some help, I don't know if it's necessarily an emergency. A better mental health issue, a better substance abuse issue. All these are different things that, you know, the fire department and police departments had to become a catch. So what didn't make sense to us is that that was driving our, which is why we don't need this help by, and that's not what we evolved. As far as increase, what we need is different type of resource and everything. What we were seeing is that what was happening was, especially at the North Mason, lack of access now, because we don't have insurance. We don't include, and still have that limitation. So we said, saying some of these issues, mental health, substance abuse, medical, and now what we do is, it's too bad, we can give you more than one, that would cost, but like. And so we didn't call, we love the work, all for this, again, medicals, acute, it's, it's, what we saw, one, we were taking our infant service a lot, giving them the hospital. We also were getting a point out, and there's some of the hospital, it's certainly a little success. That's just a lot, we were rushing the hospital. So we got these mind issues that are going on, taking any of these other services into a sense. Sticking people this is out of the middle, doesn't make sense. And the other thing, too, is, I think there's an assumption that there's this very best that happens in emergency room, with our local elevation, so, mental elevation, substance abuse issue, just give me the emergency room, it'll solve this, they'll take care of it. That doesn't happen. With a lot of mental elevations in certain circumstances, the mental elevation will actually be best back to your basement. Now, we do have a drop in, in sort of, and, but I mean, we are at least, and it's a call back, so. Pretty certain just like this, doesn't exist, would be, still makes sense, and so, we ended up hiring, we were the first in the state of Washington, we ended up hiring physician assistants. We had built a model in different departments, where it was community, their life partners. Where that model did was, except, no older, there was more social health, let's bring in, stand above, we start to, a little bit, maybe bring in some services. And those, you know, those are produces, the results that I brought before, those was, true value actually. I want to know if I could be able to refer patients to sessions, want to be able to provide prescriptions out there with the patient. I want to be, you know, essentially, just leave her, you know, a doctor, I wanted to make that available to people. So, we got it all, our physicians assistants, and a physician assistant have all those capabilities, all those things, independent physician. And so what happens is, when I'm basing this, anytime you call nine one one, fire trucks will always do it, and I don't see it, always do it. But, but it will have the opportunity, regardless of consistency, they can say, this may be something more appropriate, but PA, we have to. So PA, keep the same way, anywhere next to it, we can tell out. And then we shift about anything we can do with the urgent care set, we can do, there, so it's. We can do ultrasounds, we can do photos, we can do prescriptions, we can, we name it, we can do, we're on the verge of getting X-ray, we can do surgery. But we don't have, in, in the country, it's small. And so we got it, we brought on Adam, who's our physician assistant, we, we, oh, about two years, we built him. And this Adam was talking to us, he said, listen, what am I doing out there, with I M? Who was kind of going, of mental health, substance abuse, that's, is being called as well. And he goes, my background, like, I'm a little bit trained, but it's not like, because he's some of those, it's a certain thing, right? And so, you know, Adam was, was used to got his own, so, they, we, it was stupid and whatnot, but on the mental health side, he was a, so. We happened to spot, what I called, the morning, the beginning of the day, psychiatry. I didn't know they existed, actually, but what, I think, just because they know, if you find one, they are remarkable, but the, the other thing about being a coin is, you find one that actually likes. We see a lot of psychiatric care, these don't like the clinical setting, it's going to the conditions and houses and homes, that we see on the third party, and for them to actually see that, that is, and we ended up finding Chrissy Island, who was amazing, the best she does. It was a small town connection, especially in the, of course, Abe's in the distance, but I saw Abe from a distance, working with the sheriff's office, and a lot of everything, it was during the public health. So, his diversion, which is exactly what I wanted to do, use diversion for the jail, of course, they were going towards a kind of direction, so. He is a master of all resources, helping people. I said, I want them to join our team, use the plan, provide a medical, a bridge, and stand. And so, with Abe, with Adam, with Chrissy, now what we were able to do was to provide a playlist. You were counting somebody with mental health, substance abuse, very solid, it's that, she was going. And what it is, physical health condition, medical health, excuse me, mental health condition, underlying substance abuse. And what, a lot of times, when you're in emergency room, you'll get a physical doctor, you'll see how, where's the mental health? Where's the social one? Where's the substance abuse one? So, one of the things that we're doing in the field is just being able to take a team, and sometimes, it adds those on sometimes, this may be Abe's, and that is, and this is Adam's, and that is, and it's all three of them. And anyway, they can wrap that up, occasionally. Up north, what we also have is, anybody can refer, it's not just the fire department, schools, so our basic schools, certain towns, dominating the moment. Most of your schools are, they're a senior, in substance abuse, using their supporters, they're not good. But, you know, they're, they have a nursing level of degree, of medical provision, schools to help now provide them. Right, or, or schools, age, law enforcement, courts, our, our medical health, and medical teams, in the city, you know. Anybody, there's, there's no wrong or right, you can tell, and we travel, we can play what we want. And so, we got two new feel, and we noticed that, we're only actually, the police officers, which is, our outcomes, we got, just longer than our first year, and we saved about six million dollars. And, we put them in the old jail, they're evening, not, so we gave the six thousand dollars, to follow that by, and then for the people that would have helped in emergency, but had it going, we're about six million. We just sit out, seeing their, all hundred, thirteen, all the patient, I haven't viewed, without feeling. And so one of the things that we wanted to do was to spare, say, Abe, if you like what you've done, we're going to, that's, Chief Snyder, she figured out what we were doing, kind of, so they have a real bad one. That's something to do, the same, so they partnership with, they put the code, submit that, obviously, they proceed to install that, even sales, thanks to how this, part of the, that choice. This is which can, we can do, before I, we can see that, we just have a partnership, and just that, I couldn't duplicate, it's not more, like a down south. We were talking about, there's still, identifying, you know, she's, 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 which is much more compatible, strive, we can further, a lot of things, and we, much other things, as you can. And we ended up hiring her back in March, and what we did with Christie, she was working, she was second entry, we were going to spend four hours, then, well, she was two days, we got her. She works, and I will tell you, you guys, it's not a surprise to you, but the need for these services is probably three times down south, what is that? You know, so we'd like, we were speaking at more, but, more, numbers really, simply, there's, there's.
I didn't say everything. Probably ten of the fourteen things that uh uh see man through uh crap box. We are doing um we don't not see anybody based on continually to pay uh we do all insurance. We can better off uh helping somebody that are on the side of the street than pass them up six thousand dollars. Possibly the whole city, but only like an half. Uh but we we do we we do substance abuse. We can start with suboxone. I mean, right there on the side of her uh and it's uh again, to be able to take care of those social, behavioral, mental, substance abuse is called issues. You're the only team that takes some of your most complicated patients. If you guys don't wait, I know what the criteria is in the area of sound where um the feelings and head or uh score of problems. It's very difficult to understand um. I've seen these there's some remarkable work that they have seen there. The chances to stand out quite here. Uh but there is um this is the way that we should provide us things. Uh we might be the first in state, so certainly not the last. Uh but what I've seen happen to me since six, but it's not even for the standpoint standing there. You're moving a bit around the medicine. Again, people will sit there and they're going to use nine one one. And granted, most businesses will sit there and say, hey, if you use nine one one, there's a horrible emergency, but that's not the deal. Reality is, listen, I've got a sore throat, can't breathe, you don't have insurance, I can't afford it, but I know what the whole nine one one is. And again, we get there, we're not fully prepared as a back, we are, as certainly as we need to say, on the mental health side, on both concerns, I think. Uh the amount of uh mental health training that I got kind of in school, about three, four years. It's a lot. Now, Paul, as a whole, we're gonna see how they're making happen, just also, so substance abuse is probably not. Uh we'll tell you about the illness and say, all right, go get it for it. It's just not part of our part, it's not our area of business. So now, please, the medical providers come along on the side, we're law enforcement, we're firing, you know, as personnel. We're truly, you know, lap around uh these patients, uh makes all the difference. So uh and we're obviously monitoring our results, uh the level we've seen so far as far as dollars saved comes. Uh yeah, obviously, our industry is going down, freeing up resources. Uh and we'd love to be able to to make it, obviously, continue to do what we're doing down the same. But I'm talking about, but that's like, that's important.
I don't think, why you talk about those? Any questions, just kind of?
Not yet.
Flash right now?
I've got some comments. Um first of all, um thank you for responding to the evolving needs of what's going on out there. Um it's really important. Thank you again for coming out to the Rotary Club and telling us back in two twenty twenty two of this program. Thank you, Abe, for all you do, and also trying to the Rotary Club, shout out to the Rotary Club, four-way test, hey. Um anyway, um back in twenty twenty two, I was asked in a public forum by John Lester from the Journal and Deidre Peterson from Chamber. If there was one program that I could start or fund, what would it be? And I remember back to your speak, your talking to us at the Rotary Club, it's like Bo Bockens North Mason County. Mobile Integrated Health Program is something that I would one hundred percent support, start. Whatever money it needed, if it came down from heaven or wherever, I would do that program because it covered everything that we need that Mark pointed out. Um so that was the one thing, and I still feel the same way. I think that that's what's a really great way to get the most out of our money is to do this program here in the South. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to bring it down to Shelton, down here in the South and expanding it. It's such a great idea, and it's what we need as a city and as a society is more mental health and integrated health services. Because we are not necessarily getting them at the emergency room, and it's way more cost effective to do it this way than to have people go to the emergency room. So thank you so much for giving us this opportunity, and I hope that this council listens to this presentation and is also impressed as much as I am about what we should start. That's it.
Um let me preface before we move on um. City and partnership. Fire for the city, the county, the city, the state. Um there's uh there's money that that funds a little bit of programs. Society, we all know that, that are zero percent match. It's kind of two positions within this grant application, and we can talk about those two. Actually, A really framed this really well, what the what the existing need is, and it's still still fairly large. About a lot of the systems coordinator and then the peers, their coordinator. And peer support specialists, um there's still there's still this gap that's been seen. Successful grant application, um and then. Those in fact, yes. Uh most of the most of the existing programs, maybe we just um give more appropriate rolling to what. Um so again, um the kind of the primary position that has been proposed is assistance for a position. And this is the position that that. I don't want to say administrative, but a working position that's going to be facilitator. He's somebody that collects data and reports um on successes. To some recent information, I don't know, service providers, you know, you need outside community, what's appropriate across, but across all. Issues, treatment, considering the fact that access to these kind of programs. This is the issue there. Um the idea too is that this position can be something that they probably know. Some more coordination on some of the providers within our within our major communities and really have better uh folks to approach. With all these providers, so there's hopefully not too much fragmentation. Have much better idea what kind of service gaps are out there right now. Right? You really don't know, because you don't know where the gaps are until you until you're out and you feel like if you're mission P A, right? The need for the better of specialists sort of outstanding. Um there is other agencies playing that there's basically another help organization. Um and other other stakeholders in groups out here, yeah, yeah, that coordination is. Yeah, you know, have that piece of F T C R, so the crisis responder right now. Um and have coordination to put spread, but I know that there is maybe your troops down here, but. Everybody's been putting out fires. Just playing the, you know, with this, there is a fire party there, which is not fires and run a plan to keep the fires out, so. And certainly, you have one of the right here to go to the market right now, too. That's a decision that we're starting. Oh, that's right. Potentially, city staff person, I think we've refrained it with some potential to contract that out. Is any staff person being judged and contracted out with the with the national organization um? Isn't it perfectly, you know, with the state department, a position like that, but um certainly they have the capability of of uh. At least at this point, being flexible and seeing how how this would be that we.
Who do the COVID partners work for that you're doing in the north side? They work for the county or?
They work for the county. Well, yeah, well, I'm busy, that would be all. But but correspondent, uh different program, I feel it's for the original.
That's what we're talking about now is.
Not necessarily, no, no, it could be, I mean, it it's not a mental health profession. This position, this is a, this is essentially a court, it's somebody that kind of has an overarching mind, they might have some specialties, right? And they work specifically in substance abuse.
Yeah, and and you know, my, yeah, so so as we were kind of talking about, the different ideas is, you know, we're connected on some, hopefully, some opportunities and options. And we've been having discussion about this thing, you know. Um uh I started thinking more more in depth about how we were certainly going to see children. With uh both of their uh layers, that are in assistance. And as we're having a discussion with the second option, the association of Washington Cities, I popped up, right? So so we started kind of looking at that, he's a really good guy, he'll do some some association of Washington City, City Mike's. And as we were talking about, you know, we just expand over health and order, is there a different way to maybe look at this? And that, is there an opportunity or see something that have a position? Or that have kind of a point of contact towards in this, uh if you were to work out, you know, when you meet in the whole world, with the whole house world. So I shared a little bit about my experience, um I worked for the public health, like what things come about. In my position, I was in some towns and homes and credit service, but I was also assistant total coordination. So you consider whether the public health person, the kind of business, so this is what I'm seeing in the field. This is how the other programs are working, this will be some gaps, and this is what I think we're looking for is solutions. And so having a combination of a position that that has that real time care, that real time experience, but is also sitting at the table. With the folks that make decisions, reporting that information, there's some real time ability to, that's the talent. Um and and I will say that the programs that we got up and going, you know, at the county, um so we're still up and going, similar to some similar leading, I think, to that process. And so we felt as we were having a discussion that, you know, if we want, because I feel as if, oh, it helps to give the foundation of the health system. It kind of works in all the greater, instead of ours, only with programs, it's really a point of strength. But one, you know, substance use providers can be substance use providers, do not have uh bad as law, fires by. But more integrated health, that's not true, you kind of sold that to them, you know, great, so that everyone else can have to work outside of your skill. And so as we think about that, um I think that there's a real opportunity for the city to have a position. And whatever that goes like, whether it be all contract, subcontracting, whether it be under the city, you know, that's a terrible direction is. Um but I think there's uh a ton of value in having somebody in the city's perspective. It's not a city health member, anyone, city managers entering into that space and then taking it forward to the progression of uh city, that's what I see. And so that was the idea, was that how we, you know, make a PCB like there, we can create one brain and more dedicated help. But also set up this effort for success, long-term success, um so that, uh you know, sustain. So I think that's a little bit about kind of what we're, yeah, intention. Uh and uh all still about, for certain areas.
Pretty much like you've seen the message of crisis responding, again, you started differently, you didn't see, you showed some results, it shows a few data, it improves better, you can see it, you can show it, we can step up. Having having that nation, having that. You know, and period that they've been showing the results.
This is, this is my advantage. The one thing that the southern part of the county now is very important, is more services, they're 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 made, it's the problem we see is that everything we're rolling. It's not the same direction, and so there's a lot of doing stuff, which is great. We'll set a foundation like through who that just says, all right, for the bottom of the days. Are we rolling in the same direction, so we can simply, that's all, it's like, it's staying with its way of the fire. It's not a surprise, we dropped a lot of hospital, hospitals, I think, which is all this, we lose staff, but uh and the more integrated health is is absolutely good. Uh and it obviously, well, uh doing the same thing, you know, how will we, you know, at a system level, how do we, well, in some directions, this is a bad sign.
So, I mean, everything that you said sounds great, but I don't know what we're buying yet, what are we buying? I mean, if we're, you know, what do we?
So so initially, is that systems coordinator, okay? So that that's that's the person that is is carving things on the ground, also the coordination needs, they describe. Bring the bringing the pieces together to form an entire, how's it like, the hell side, the east side, probably might be the manager, right? How we how those referrals, we're collecting the data, nobody concerns, right, that is all. And sure, um TV shows are like telecaster or whoever else they might need to provide the services.
Okay, so in the beginning, we're not going to have the unicorn on the back.
But.
Oh, we will, okay.
You're not in place, okay, you're not there.
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah, I guess.
Yeah, I think that position, if 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 what's on paper, it was come to your prediction. It'd be the the coordinate position. Uh there's not being anything on here, as well, more of a, of a, of a city itself area, as well as part of it. That means super volatile, it's, 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 you know, it sounds nice, but I might, for, as you see. Uh it would make too much of a hand on that, with the way that all, it's actually that point here. Um and also, I'm just saying, I think that would work alongside, or also.
Got it, and then how much would say you ever seen that for?
Um, yeah.
About one hundred seventy, I think, the opioid money, right?
And then?
Twenty four, five sixty.
In future plenty, where Zach can be.
That's.
The opioid money.
Right.
Well, I don't know if that's that much.
Well, the the bulk of the operating because it's just, it's like sales and distribution, I think, so it's manufacturers, everybody, it's spirit, it's so, it's large. Pharmacy, we have straight, so there's some side on that stuff, so, you know, we're not, we're not guaranteeing any certain amount of stuff forward. I just want to research for one Washington, see what they use, it's a person.
Yeah, my, yeah, my concern, what's how is this program, when we spend the one seventy and then the eighty four, how do we continue this program?
Yeah.
Down the road.
There is a lot of uh iteration, two months, um.
It all sounds great, so I'll make sure we can afford it next year, and the year after, and the year after. So.
Sustainability, obviously.
Yeah, right.
Well.
That's the county always said the dial way, you always say, dial way, they always say that.
Well, we said about wave, right, that is easier to come behind, about wave, and I think that's the intent here, right? We have to start somewhere, we have to establish program, we need to research first, except by that way. And we can build, we build partnerships too, you know, with, basically, I would say, I'm decreasing. You know, people gathering their their emergency room, they're not being, it's close. And Mace Tom is receiving less calls, um we're we're paying about sixty dollars per call. Based on each year, and obviously, probably not going down.
That's only our, that's only our costs, not their costs, their costs are actually higher, right?
Well, they they, Mace Tom passes on the the true cost of providing the service to all the partner agencies, including Insurrection Fire Authority, Central Mason Fire. Uh City Shelter, Trial and Order, Sheriff's Office, and it's.
So we can show, yeah, if you can show how much we're saving, then we can get more partners saying, hey, you're saving X amount of money. Kickback X minus this, and then.
I mean, that's part of the discussion, you've seen already, right?
Yeah, I mean, if 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 I can wave back, two days, my experience is, you know, my hospital, the insurance companies, right? Come down, you know.
Are you getting any any plans from the hospital district?
Yes, yes, so we are, yeah, we're both the hospital, this is number one, I'm working for, I'm working in the constitution. So we have that, it's two of them, or one, that's it. Um but the insurance companies, uh they're several of them, you know, since, um they don't understand what this is, you're going, like, wait, are they for N P A? So I think, what is this all about, you don't know how to code this, this is not a, so, uh but they're the very beneficiary, you know, when you don't take a, you know, Medicaid and or a. Uh United Healthcare Patient Emergency, or who's beneficiary, without it, it's not the insurance company. So the insurance company should, you know, maybe five hundred thousand dollar investment, you say, you know, it was just standing there, you know, the stuff, it's not even the hospital, which is possible. We are making that, mainly, um unfortunately, insurance companies, they want big ventures to battle, they want to come to the C U S app, it's you, or. Like a gag, just like a little miss now, and it's like, I don't know, we can do much actuarial, sign risk, it's so. Uh we we will, we will get ultimately, I don't know, for insurance company, they're like, well.
Is Kellner Sapp still on, or do you need him again? Kellner Sapp, do you have any questions?
Uh no questions at this time, thanks.
Sounds like if we can get the A W C money, we'll have maybe two years of runway for something like this, and also, like. Is there any limitation on how we can use the, uh I know there's limitations on the opioid settlement money, but in this scope, is it pretty much wide open? We can just say it's this program, and we can roll it all in?
There's an alternative response, alternative response team, I think. Um program, it's out of the circle, there's, it's fairly broad, and this was, this came through some new legislation that specifically was was tied into the city, tied with uh. Towards, how they, how we say, uh a lot of a capability to to innovate, um. Co-responder programs, uh but there's, you know, there's co-responder programs, which make that, I guess, simplified, just what it means in your community, how how you best place the professionals. And this is your experience.
Definitely share your concern about long-term costs, but it does seem like two years is a great amount of time to collect data and have a real impact. And everything you've shared is super amazing, really, that's awesome.
I wonder if there's any chance for us to make apply for any T S T money from the county, you know, for the.
I think there's, yeah, I think there's a case, a good case to pay. Definitely do whatever we can to help you guys move forward with this. Um we'll figure out the long-term funding later, we have to, um but I think this is a win for everybody, I would assume the different stuff that you guys have done. Uh I know a lot of the fire department people out here, I know a lot of people involved with this program, I know all the good that it's done, I think. To do whatever we can to champion, get behind it, and move forward.
Here, I guess, of of what what we have right here.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, in addition, uh probably the position. There's a, well, now, I provide, I'm authentic, so I'm all good recovery, I don't, I don't, I'll, it's uh, I'll get my Washington City, my through. Um license, I don't know, I said, county, and so uh. I would provide there's and and have that support, it's me, and also, I think this is, uh, source communication. And uh we want to just, I value, you know, having that position on the field. Um and so that's a, don't have, apparently, um you know, uh. Um it's one thing to be sitting in front, um you know, somebody with a lot of experience, right, you know, a doctor or somebody else that I need to hear from somebody that says, that's in, you know, prices, or. You know, it's it's true, and so we can, we can sort of talk about, just what they have going on, so. And there's many, some of these, uh, got the experience and had shared experience, shared language, that kind of thing, uh uh. It's time to date it, and show the best, the guys, starting boom, um and so again, that, this is the easiest course as possible. Um one of the things that I quite mentioned, but there's, there's a boost, and again, it's trust, where you can, from the fire department's perspective, right? Uh and we don't take that for granted, and I think the same thing, uh it was. It was just kind of some odd, I had to ask, okay, my, my, my name. So. Talk to, don't see, don't, uh talk about what his next steps are, so. We see, we think that's the other part, we're going to continue, and it's something that we would like to add, um so in addition to some. Nursing services, which I think, uh, initially, also, like, they're, they're on, uh, on here, and uh, we now here is one. Sorry, I'm sure it's made a game, the point for the sometimes, as I said, game, is, you know, I I do, I do this fast. If you just say, hey, there was concerns, obviously, with that record, so I think that that would pass, probably would pass, probably be confused with the word of the fire department, he said. Um, but that's the best, right? Uh it's just a resume, because you're going to have experience that I don't have in my role, our fire department, I don't have, every guard, you know. We had a patient, sort of, yeah, we got it away, uh, I'm a phone call, I'm going down by myself. Next thing, now, I'm almost the one on hands, obviously, you know, it's uh severe outbreak, so, and so, um I back away with the situation. Uh, you know, even things today, uh I call eight now, that there is like a different language, there's sort of, I'm sitting there watching it off, and there's different language. Difference, uh interaction, um it's something that just began out of my guy, you know, what, all of a sudden, go, battle situation, see. This person is on the way to these acts, and I'm exploring, wanting to go, you know. Uh I wasn't going to get in there, I was thinking, I don't like it, it's a cavity, you're speaking in like, right now, we, we feel like we got. We're literally flat tire on that floor, but you're just like, submit. So again, it's a guarantee, you're about, you're yelling, where is the fear? You know, she used to work with A, with Oregon, same area, I kind of put together a plan, and what A does, execute this plan, and work with it, it will build that trust. Some of the systems and that, that sounds like, you, you shouldn't have this, you know, that, 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 just bring in a green vest to the city, you can't be just changing the rules. It's amazing, why?
I just want to reiterate my thankfulness and gratitude, and that the integrated approach, I think, is so responsive to what we really need and what's going on out there. So um tell us how we can get more and how we can get the insurance companies to change their minds. And if we can add our, you know, little city of ten thousand to your data, then maybe other rural areas could do that as well. So I'm I'm a hundred percent on board, and it sounds like our council is too, so I would like to take part in this experiment. And make it a nationwide, graft it on to what we need around the country, not just here, in in Mason County, so thank you again.
Uh just a purchase of call, I'm going to say, thank you, very appreciate it, uh and we want to be that on call. Um certainly, I think the calls are going to have to get up here, probably around seventeen thousand, that's the difference. All right, so we go from little, you know, data cell, so basically, it's, it's, we will, we'll, we'll, what's going to happen. Um and unfortunately, as you guys know, you sense this in the other thing as well, you can see. Um, and unfortunately, as you guys know, you sense this in the other thing as well, you consider like, you know, the long city a lot of issues that a lot of systems, basically, that are towards right here, in the center of the county. And so, uh, you know, yes, they tend to have it for, that, like, you, 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 it's lion's share, a lot of self-act, you know, and, and, but, but, this is the part out, you know, getting involved in this, they have. I love the peer program, I worked in telecater for a while, once upon a time, and, uh, sometimes when peers are commanding, it's just a whole different, it's obviously, it's, the body's in a much better mood, you know, they're like, and they just, you know, he said it's a different language. And it's a beautiful thing to watch, and I definitely, you know, we've seen some situations to have out here, that would be an amazing piece to have, I like it.
We've got, uh, for it, Lindsay.
I like it, it sounds good to me, I'd like to move the, uh, discussion forward.
So I, I think next steps, um, we obviously need to see how successfully. But to turn around really quick, it's, obviously, this, your mistake starts July one. I find it hard to believe that it will happen. Um, recommendations are scoring by then, but um, but in the meantime, we can start discussing further what it's like, uh, as, as an I L A. It's just like, we're talking about seeing where it fits, maybe reach out to a couple of our partners where, um, and really decide to bring that to you, with a senseless. Heck, you fix.
I, I would prefer it be a contract. That we don't have, create a position in Alice, but, or you do like this, like we do with the D C R, but one, we don't really, I mean, do we have a problem, we bring in and make a new position, is it going to give me a union position?
Well, sorry, but, yeah, but we, yeah, we can work out some, I, I have the same concerns, right? Who, who would this person report to, do they have the support structure at new, straight level? That they may have some of themselves, being like, we see the shelter, is it being, resources I have, though, to me, I'm certainly not certainly not in a position to, um, to provide the, the support that, that Mason Fire has. I certainly, I bet a shot, but I would be better option. Is it, you know, it's not, certainly not our finance partner, I don't work in a, very, not traditional, is it in our place department, maybe I can, let these gentlemen, oh, respond to that. Having mom enforcement integrated into a mobile integrated health program does it provide me to, uh, have people open up to the office and, and see if we sort of, you know. No offense to our, these, right, but they have a whole. Yeah, so, um, so it's probably not a natural fit, but there's, so we find our best, you know, that's, 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 you know, bring, bring options.
Thank you, gentlemen. Council have any new items for discussion tonight?
Hard blocks. Let's be there Saturday.
Well, this study session is over at six fifty-four.